Alright, everyone. Apologize for the delay. I'd like to thank everyone for coming out for the city council meeting. The hour of 6:00 PM. Having come and gone. I'd like to call the regular city council meeting of Cayman City to order at 16:10 PM. Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll?
Navarrete.
Here.
Wilson.
Here.
Tillman.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Gardner.
Here.
Patton.
Smith.
Thank you. Would everyone please rise for the pledge of allegiance? We usually have our chaplain here to say a prayer to start off this council meeting, so I would invite one of my colleagues or someone from the audience if you would like to start off with a prayer. So if one of the aldermen would like to start us off, I'd appreciate it. Go ahead, Alderman Gardner. Our next item on the business is public comment. Is there anyone from the public who would like to comment on items on the agenda? If so, please step to the mic. We have three minutes. Again, is there anyone from the public? If you want to step to the mic, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Mary Jo Orr, and I would like to know what's the priority list of getting trees cut down?
I'm sorry, could you state your name and address for the record, please?
It's Mary Jo Orr, 112 155th Street, Cayman City, Illinois.
So the process, we will definitely explain it to you. Which ward do you live in, ma'am?
The 5th. Yeah, he knows.
You know, we just had a meeting and we will definitely work with the alderman to make sure that if your name is not on the list, we will follow the process. Just so you know, there have been trees and issues that haven't been resolved in five years.
Right.
Not by the alderman, but just the process, the prior process. So we're working through making sure everyone that was on the list previously, that we get attention and making sure that we get the trees cut down. We're working with our Public Works Department, which is behind you, all of our deputy commissioners. But if you provide your name and address to the alderman, we'll make sure we look.
He knows it.
Okay.
He already knows my name.
We are working through it, ma'am. We are.
Okay, but these are trees that was damaged during the storm.
Okay.
And he said they were put on the priority list, and I've been waiting, and they still, they're falling. Branches are falling over into my property because when the storm came, all the branches that was on the tree, because you can see through them now, they landed in my backyard.
Yep.
Now, he sent the guy over there when they was checking the neighborhood, and he said all of them had to be cut down because they totally damaged.
Okay.
Okay?
We will definitely look at that, ma'am, and the guys behind you at Public Works will make sure we get to it. I can't promise you when we're gonna get to it. We have a lot of people on the list, but we are working with it.
Okay, because ComEd came out, they sent the ticket saying they was trimming.
Yes.
And the guy that came out, he looked at him and asked what happened to him, and I told him. He said the city was supposed to cut that down a long time ago because they hanging over wires. One is then grow through the wires.
Yep.
And that's a fire hazard, he said.
Well, we have a program where we're working with ComEd, which we announced at our last city council meeting, where ComEd is working with the city this year. Our Public Works Department is doing a lot of tree trimming in-house, and we're gonna use our outside vendor to make sure we get this done. Again, we have a lot of people on the list, and we are working through that list to make sure we get to them before the fall season. So if you can give your name and number, or we got it from the alderman, we'll make sure we get to it.
Well, I don't know, already not.
Okay.
He said he was giving it to the commission.
Ma'am, we have your name on the list. Correct, Alderman?
Yes.
And we'll make sure we get to it.
Okay.
Is there anyone else who would like to step to the mic and if you can please state your name and address for the record?
Deborah Hamilton, 300/400 Black of Benzley, 2nd Ward. My alderman is Monet Wilson. Greetings, Mayor, city officials, and our collective community here. My question to you today, I'm sure you know you're gonna hear about it, the car wash, that the gate was threw up overnight. None of the residents, well, in my surrounding area, knew about that we were getting the car washed. We already had two fail car washes in the area, so now what?
So this issue was happened before I got in office. It happened before Alderman Wilson got in office. We had a meeting with Alderman Wilson. We're working with the contractor. This is a potentially $5 million investment in Cayman City. This is also a potentially investment in our youth and in our community. So we plan on having a community meeting soon, and we're gonna have the people come out. They were here at the city council. Part of what I wanted to do and instructed everyone that got an incentive from Cayman City was to come before the council and the public to explain the enhancements and incentives that they were gonna do. This particular vendor has been here three times, so we are gonna have a meeting in the 2nd Ward with the vendor, so you can hear everything that they're gonna do at that location. There's nothing legally we can do to stop them from going in, but I think it's better for the city if you hear the incentives that they're gonna have and what that's gonna do for the 2nd Ward. So please allow us time to schedule a meeting at the library, and we'll make sure that you can ask Buddy Bear Car Wash everything you need to ask at that meeting. So it'll be happening probably in the next couple of weeks.
Okay. Thank you. I release.
You're welcome. Is there anyone else who would like to come before the public? Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. You may wish to set the timer three minutes, because I'm gonna try to fit all of this in in three minutes. Good evening, Mayor, city clerk, elected alderman. My name is Doyle, D-O-Y-L-E. It's Irish, but obviously I'm African-American. Landry. My father came and was arrived in New Orleans. So...
Can you state your name and your address for the record, please?
Sure. Doyle Landry. But I would technically need your permission because I'm not a resident of Cayman City, but there's an item on your agenda.
We still need your name, we still need your address for the record.
Sure. I'm a resident of Dalton. Item 8, subsection C. I was born in January of 1970 and grew up from down the street from the 22nd District Police Station in Chicago at 1094 South Esmond.
For clarification, you mentioned 8, subsection C. You referring to something legal in the Constitution or...
No, no, on your agenda. You said items on the agenda?
Okay.
Section 8, subsection C, Cayman City Police Officer Testing and Hiring Announcement to Encourage Residents to Apply to the Cayman City Police Department.
Okay.
Oh, I forgot. I am a United States Marine Corps veteran.
Okay.
So with that being said, grew up down the street from the 22nd, 22nd District of the Chicago Police Department since 1973. Was encouraged to interact with the predominantly white police district, of which Mr. Michael Sheen was our alderman. He later became the sheriff of Cook County. I'm laying a foundation as it relates to your current hiring encouragement of hopefully younger African-American and Latinx men and women to join your police department. Why? On May 19th, 2010, I met for approximately 30 minutes with Officer Thomas Eugene Wertham IV. Had known him since he was 10, and we share the same January 20th birthday. He left me at 11 o'clock at night and needed to go down the street to show off his motorcycle to his parents. And for those of you who know the rest of the story, my life has not been the same since because Officer Thomas Eugene Wertham IV was killed in front of his parents 30 minutes after we left each other at 79th and King Drive in Chicago. None of the murderers were white. Fast forward to today, and we are dealing with, because for those of you who know what I really like, I'm a journalist. If there's an employee of the Daily South Town after this meeting, I'd like to speak with you because coincidentally, yesterday's South Town deals with Cayman City, and today's South Town deals with Dalton. I spent every Saturday growing up going to, in the morning, Operation Push with the Reverend Justin Louis Jackson Jr.
Mr. Doyle, can you bring your comments to applause, please?
I said three minutes.
You're at two minutes.
And in the evening with Mr. Lou Palmer. So I'm not very happy with how either Cayman City, both Dalton, neighboring cities, suddenly authored or led by African-Americans for the first time ever is being portrayed in our media. It has a direct effect to whether or not young people of various races who have grown up in the George Floyd era, or whether or not they joined the police force, of which I am a strong supporter.
Mr. Doyle, your time is up. Could you please, Mr. Doyle?
Sure. With due respect, sure, with due respect, if we could work together to encourage young people to join the police force.
Mr. Doyle, Mr. Doyle, your comments, you can submit your comments to the city council?
Well, I did. I told people before I came in that...
You can submit them to us in writing?
We'll do. We'll do. But again, as an United States Marine Corps veteran, we deserve better in both Cayman City and Dalton.
Is there anyone else from the public who would like to come to the mic? If not... Give me a second, please. So item four on the agenda, our approval of minutes, we'd like to table the minutes until the next city council meeting. We'll add them to the agenda. Item six on the agenda are reports of standing committees. Finance, Alderman Gardner.
No report tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Public Safety, Alderman Williams.
Nothing at this time, Mayor. Thank you.
Public Utilities, Alderman Smith. For the record, Alderman Smith has excused absence tonight. Ordinances and Resolutions, Alderman Tillman.
Thank you, Mayor. The recommendations of the committee from the last committee meeting has been sent over to the city attorney. We expect those ordinances to be drafted for the October 14th regular council meeting. Thank you, Mayor.
Health Education, Wilford, Alderman Patton.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one quick item tonight. Last week, I had the opportunity to participate in a Zoom meeting with the Cook County Department of Public Health and local leaders from the Southland Community. Cayman City has been named one of the 12 communities in the Cook County Department of Public Health's push towards vaccination against COVID-19. Our community is one of the 12th worst vaccinated communities, 12th least vaccinated communities in the Southland and in the entire county. And so the county is offering a number of opportunities for our residents that want to get vaccinated that haven't yet, including rides to vaccination sites, you know, on-demand vaccination if we have events with the city. Any of my colleagues, if you have events coming up, the county will provide a vaccination station to come out to you if you alert them ahead of time. So any residents that have not been vaccinated yet but wish to get vaccinated, please call my office at 708-891-8196. We will make sure to hook you up with the resources necessary to get you vaccinated. If you can't get out of your home, they've got resources to come to your home and vaccinate you, but please, we're all in this together. Let's get everybody vaccinated. Let's get this done. Thank you, Mayor.
And Alderman, you have a flyer on your desk if you want to mention that this Saturday and Sunday with Cook County and our joint cooperation.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. So Green Lake Forest Reserve this weekend, or this weekend?
Yes.
Yes, this weekend, September 25th and 26th, 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM, there will be a Cayman City vaccination event at, again, at Green Lake Forest Reserve, 1100 River Oaks Drive. Free shots, free rides to your shot. So if you need, if you need a ride to get your shot, call 833-308-1988. And it looks like they've got the Pfizer, the Moderna, and the Johnson &amp; Johnson, according to this flyer.
And it's Sunday as well. So it's, the county is giving us a great partnership and spending a lot of money to help us get to that point. So thank you, Alderman. Permits and Licensing, Alderman Wilson.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to say that we will have a meeting for permits and licensing before the end of this month. I do want to take the time to thank the residents of the 2nd Ward who have come to speak and make their voice and presence heard and seen regarding this car wash. As the Chair of the Permits and Licensing Committee, this application did not come across me, nor did it come across the mayor. Our signatures will not be found on it. There may not be much that we can do to stop it, but we sure don't have to support it. It is very important that you keep becoming and maintaining and engage in what goes on in Cayman City and especially our ward. We are one of the highest tax bases in Cayman City. As soon as this meeting with Buddy Bear Car Wash is set, I will send out communication as we always communicate. I do thank you again for your mere presence. I have all of the petitions. This happens to be what I ran in and got from Hoxie. A total of 435 residents are unpleased. They're displeased. Again, I thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Public Works, Alderman Navarrete.
Thank you, Mayor. Just briefly, an announcement that there will be a Public Works Committee meeting held in early October to discuss the fall, upcoming fall season and the winter season as well, closing out some of the initiatives we had in the spring. The vacant house pilot grass cutting program, we'll also be closing that out and discussing how that went. But that'll be early in October. Thank you.
You're welcome. And before we go on, I'd like to, because I will get beat up at home if I don't mention this, my wife, Sabrina Jones, is in the audience. Wife, if you want to stand up? So I'd like a motion to deviate at this point to, for the purposes of presenting the resolution and also inviting our police chief up for a statement. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Alderman Patton, second by Alderman Tillman. All in favor?
All opposed.
Chief?
Good evening. I'd like to make one thing clear here today. There's been a lot of social media posts that have been going around, Ring Doorbell app, other social media avenues. There was not a shooting ads or around TFR High School today. There have been several statements on social media of suspected violence at schools nationwide recently and in areas surrounding Cayman City and Cook County, including the north suburb of Waukegan and the northwest suburb of Naperville. The Cayman City Police Department has increased patrols and maintained the presence at all schools here in Cayman City. Earlier this afternoon, there was an unconfirmed report of gunshots in the northeast area of Cayman City and approximately one mile from any school. Officers responded to this area and did not locate any evidence of gunfire. This seems to be, don't know where it began, but it seems to be a nationwide trend recently with the rumors of violence and threats of violence in schools. Well, we have had officers out at every school today. We had extra officers that we called in from, from home to provide that sense of security out there. There have been no credible threats, threats that we have received, but we are on top of it, and we are increasing our presence at the schools. Thank you, Chief.
I think one of the things that we need from the chief's message is to, we want to ask everyone to exercise caution when spreading untruths when it comes to our kids and our youth and mainly our schools, because it has a ripple effect on the schools and what we have to do with our police force. So we want to make sure that everyone is exercising caution. We know that social media has taken over, but at the same time, our kids are impacted by every false rumor that goes out at the schools, and our schools are, have to protect our students. So I want to thank you, Chief, and the department for not only at one school, but making sure that all of our schools and our kids were protected today and tomorrow, and the good job that our police and fire are doing. Thank you. I know you have resolutions to present as well.
Do you have the resolutions to read?
So there are three resolutions. And Chief, I will just say, we will just read the title and you can do them because we will... Madam Clerk, do you have the resolutions?
Just reading by title?
Yeah.
Okay. Is it number four, number five?
Yes.
And number six?
Yes. So the motion under resolutions would be to read resolution by title, Resolution 4, 5, and 6, and have the chief do the presentation. Is there a motion? Motion made by Alderman Patton, second by Alderman Gardner. All in favor?
Aye.
Madam Clerk, can you read them by title?
Yes. Number four is a resolution recognizing Sergeant Stephen Wheaton, and number five is a resolution recognizing Officer Jeffrey Newburg.
Chief?
Sergeant Wheaton was not able to make it tonight. Officer Newburg is here, however, with his family. Jeff, can you please step up? Jeff has been a policeman in Cayman City for 26 years, has provided a lot, a lot of our public relations. Jeff spearheaded a program where he changed, he turned a former police car into what is now known as the Cayman City NASCAR, all with donations and donating his own time. Jeff has also, with his creative mind that he has, decided to take a, what was the year of the vehicle?
19... Another question?
A 1920's vehicle that was almost all rusted out. Jeff had a vision. Jeff turned that vision into a Santa sleigh, got donations from all different businesses here in Cayman City, and that vehicle was even showcased on Motor Trend Show, Garage Squad from Motor Trend. Jeff put a lot of his hard work into that. Jeff put a lot of his own creative mind into that. And aside from that, Jeff has done a lot of other good work for the city of Cayman City. As I said, he's been a policeman for 26 years. Jeff has received numerous awards and commendations from the police department and the city. Jeff, I'm gonna turn the mic over to you, but I'm gonna limit your time as well. But Jeff, thank you, and on behalf, on behalf of the city of Cayman City and the Cayman City Police Department, I'd like to present you with this plaque. Thank you for your... Now, those that know Jeff, know that he is not short with his words, but I'm gonna turn the mic over to Jeff and him say a few words.
Well, Chief, before you do that, we need to make a motion to limit Jeff to one minute. But we also... It's called a John Casperig Rule. So after you get finished talking, I would invite my colleagues up front to take a picture with Jeff and his family. But go ahead, Jeff, you got one minute.
To be honest, this is, the thank you goes to you guys. I said in 1995, September 1st, when I was hired, like most guys, you go all over the place and test, you can test. I grew up in this area. I actually lived at 1570, right above the old chef's table when I was in college. So I love the city, just want to make a part, be a bit part of it and do what you can to make it a better place. My grandfather always had a speech that I lived by. Says, no matter what job you have, no matter what career you're doing, when it comes to an end, always make sure you left it better off than when you got there. Make a difference. So it's nice to see that between t-shirts and diecast cars, the NASCAR was a great project. It really helped our grade program. I think it's a time, Alderman, Thaddeus was an alderman at the time, was 100% behind me, helped me get that going. So it wasn't for the community, it wasn't for the citizens here. Mr. Tucker, the same thing, it's just an iota. You guys has been great in any kind of programming, things we've had, Mr. Patton, I says Gardner, Tillman, all you guys, I never have met, known here forever with the Chargers, everything. It's just been a great time to come back to the community and get back to the community. It's wasn't just being an officer and just doing things like that. The toy room has been a major problem that we've had for a long time, which is a smaller event. We wanted to make it bigger and better. The hot rod and everything, we went from 10 families to 30 families to help out the citizens of this town. So it's just been a great honor of mine. I said, the side of the car talks about to serve and protect, you know, and that's kind of what you're all about. You do lose a lot of time with your family. You miss holidays, you miss birthdays, you miss anniversaries and things like that. You change shifts every month, and it kind of wears on you a little bit, but you know that you want to make a big difference. And I said, thank you for giving me the opportunity to do that for Cayman City. And I said, thank you to my wife, my daughters, who have always been there for me for all my projects, all my things to do, and always supported me, and are kind of glad that now I'm home more often. But again, thank you for giving me that opportunity. Come on, yeah, come on, come on, come on. Be right here. I think I can't see anybody coming. Come on a little bit, yeah? All right, everybody. If you can see me, I can see you. One, two. One more time. One, two. Yeah, thank you.
All right, everybody. If you can see me, I can see you. One, two. Do it one more time. One, two. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Chief, and family.
An ordinance authorizing an honorary street name for certain portions of Missyegan Avenue in recognition of Bishop Cott.
Alderman Tillman.
Thank you, Mayor. We are happy that the Ordnance Resolutions Committee recommended that we rename a street after our late Bishop Pastor Cios. At the next council meeting, October 14th, we are going to invite the church and its family here to officially rename the street and have a ceremony for it. So hopefully, we see you all October 14th at the next council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Chief, are there any other matters you'd like to address while we're in deviation?
No, thank you, sir.
Is there a motion to return to the regular order of business? Motion made by Alderman Patton, second by Alderman Gardner. All in favor? Next item are city council reports. I will defer my report for the end of the meeting. City Treasurer Tucker, do you have a report?
Nothing this evening, Mayor.
Madam Clerk, do you have a council report?
No, no.
We will start on this side, Alderman Patton, city council reports.
Thank you, Mayor. I just got one quick item, or two quick items, I guess. One, I'd like to thank the Public Works Department, the deputy commissioners, especially Deputy Commissioner Scott, who I spent some time on the phone with this morning, for responding very rapidly to several requests that I had from residents in the past week and a half. The Public Works Department's been under fire for a while. You know, we've been short-staffed, you know, going back to before COVID, and these guys are doing the best that they can with what they've got over there, and I appreciate everything you guys are doing to help make sure that our residents' requests are getting taken care of. So I want to make sure I shout you guys out for that. And on that note, you know, again, residents, if you have any issues that need attention, please call my office, 708-891-8196, or email me at jpatton@calumetcity.org. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Gardner?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank the Fifth Ward residents for coming out to last week's town hall meeting and discussion and conversation with the mayor. Thank all the department heads that were in attendance. There was a lot of great discussion and dialogue at... Also, I want to thank the Public Works Department for following up on some of those issues, and I'm encouraging the residents to please be patient, as some issues can be addressed faster than others. If you have any other questions or concerns or issues in the neighborhood or community, please contact my office, 708-891-8195, 708-8195. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Williams?
Hello, everybody. First, we round the God who makes all things possible. Want to announce the Third and Fourth Ward Monthly Meeting will be October 4th at Downey Park, 300 Jeffrey Avenue at 6:30 PM. Feel free to come over and discuss your issues. Otherwise, you can call the office at 708-891-8194. 708-891-8194. You can continue to call and also send text messages to the phone at 708-212-2240. Want to reiterate the congratulations for Jeff Newburg. Job well done. Job well done. Jeff was one of the first community service officers that had the pleasure of joining me at my first ward meeting, and awesome job, and we really appreciate your service here in Calumet City. May God bless you in your endeavors and your retirement. City applications for the police department are available now, and they are due October 11th. They can be picked up at the Calumet City Police Department at 1200 Pulaski Road. The written is October, the written exam is October 16th, and the oral interview is November 12th. Thank you. That's it, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Tillman?
Thank you, Mayor. Real briefly, just want to also invite the Third Ward residents out to me and Alderman Williams' monthly town hall meeting. Just as a reminder, this is the first Monday of every month at 6:30 at Downey Park every time. So we will be having another meeting, November, December, January. So I encourage all residents to start to participate. Thank you.
Alderman Wilson?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to first thank the Second Ward residents for an outstanding town hall last week. It lasted a little longer than we had expected. I said an hour, we didn't get out there, out of the training center until 9:30 PM. I understand there was a message from our mayor sent out today. I didn't get it, but he said he is still working on a lot of the issues and concerns that were addressed, and I believe he's going to have something coming out regarding that. I would like everyone to add Psalms 91:10 to their Bible selection at night. Keep your hedge of protection around them. The them are our children. They are under attack. We have to pray over and for our children when they wake up, when they go to sleep, and when they leave our homes. We want them to come back like they leave, healthy and of sound mind. No one wants to send their kids to a school or to a function and have tragedy occur. Just please, if you're not a praying person, start praying. There is nothing too big for our God to change. I would like to say congratulations to Officer Jeff. Officer Jeff is the epitome of community service. He jumped in and loved on our kids like they were our own, like they were his own, and I will always be grateful for that. Congratulations on a well-deserved retirement, and hopefully, we can bring you back in some capacity. Hence, hence. Thank you to Public Works. I don't know what's going on over there or down there, but every time I ask for something, it is done, and it is done well, and it is done timely, and I have an explanation of what was done, and I appreciate that, because when you work well for the residents, you have a friend in me. I encourage the council to work on behalf of the city and support our citywide officials, the mayor, our city clerk, and our treasurer. They are tasked with providing support, resources, and things, basic things and needs for an entire city. I welcome any Alderman who wishes to work in partnership with me, and I represent, and as I represent the Second Ward. If you want to work with me, I will work with you, but I respectfully ask that you respect both my seat and my ward boundaries. Amen. Last, but not least, congratulations to the Calumet City Chargers. They had homecoming at TF North last weekend, five games, and they smoked four of them. I am proud of those children from Calumet City, and thank you to the residents that came out, ate a hot dog, and supported those kids. Thank you.
Mayor, point of personal privilege. Alder Woman, you mentioned you're welcoming of any of your colleagues that would like to work with you. Does that include and extend to the Christmas decor, the holiday decorating contest between the Second Ward and the Sixth Ward?
Do you hear this, Second Ward? I told you. So not only did we take attendance and a sign-up list, but we got you on best flowers, best lawn maintenance, best Christmas decorations, Halloween decoration, we're going to sign something for Thanksgiving. Challenge accepted, Alderman Patton.
You're on, Alder Woman. Thank you, Mayor.
So just so the public is aware of this contest, so it's the best house on the block contest between wards, so we encourage you guys to participate, and I think right now, the two that have accepted this challenge are the Second Ward and the Sixth Ward. So we'll see who's going to win this contest, probably December 1st or December 15th when we announce the winners. All right. We'll get your applications in to the Second Ward, Sixth Ward, and all the wards, and let's make Calumet City a better city. Alderman Navarrete?
Alderman Wilson's a tough act to follow. I'd like to make a motion to make sure we start with the first and then shoot the second. I don't have to follow Alderman Wilson. Just, I'll make it brief. Just a huge thank you to all the team members and residents that made it out this past Saturday to the Walk the Ward event. It was a great success. We couldn't have asked for better weather. There were about 40 residents that participated, and while we're hoping for more, the input that was received was extremely insightful, extremely productive. As the data is compiled, I will be reporting back with the priorities, the initiatives that the First Ward will be working toward. It was certainly a big effort. A big thank you to Jamie Jackson of the American Planning Association of Illinois. She also had six members of the American Planning Association come out to volunteer that day. Thank you to Public Works for setting up the tents and tables and chairs. Again, it was certainly a community effort, and it was a success, and I look forward to reporting back the findings. Just a reminder, for those who didn't make it out, if you go to the city's website this week and search in First Ward Survey, you can still participate in the survey. There won't be the grand prize of the 55-inch TV that went to Ms. Evans. She was ecstatic about it. She screamed and hugged me. Social distancing was not a thing when her name was announced, so congratulations to Ms. Evans. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Item eight on the agenda, informational items to be accepted and placed on file. You have items eight A through E. If everyone has reviewed it, is there a motion to accept items eight A through E and place them on file?
So moved.
Motion made by Alderman Patton, second by Alderman Williams. All in favor?
Gardner.
I'm sorry. For the record, second was Alderman Gardner, and motion was made by Alderman Patton.
No, motion made by Gardner.
Motion made by, who made the motion?
Gardner.
Me.
Gardner made the original motion. It was second by Williams.
Sorry. That works. Sure.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion passes for the items accepted. Item nine are new business items. For the record, item two came out of our town hall meetings with both the Second Ward and the Fifth Ward, and that is to direct our city attorney to draft the ordinance to prohibit the use of fireworks and firecrackers in the city of Calumet City, and to set fines and to set impoundment of vehicles. Alderman Tillman, this matter can be referred to your committee if you like, but we want to make sure that we listen to the residents who have encouraged our police department and our city to crack down on people who are illegally using fireworks. So Alderman Tillman, item two, do you want to take separately?
Yeah, I'll take item number two separately, or I can just make the motion right now to refer item number two to the Ordnance and Resolutions Committee.
So.
Motion made by Alderman Tillman, second by Alderman Williams. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Item two, refer to the Ordnance and Resolutions Committee. Correction on item number five, it should be Diane Nichols instead of Diane Washington. Has everyone had the opportunity to read the rest of items on the new business, items A through 11? Is there any questions? If not, if someone can make a motion?
I think both of the tasks, items one, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, are submitted.
Motion made by Alderman Patton, second by Alderman Wilson. Roll call, Clerk.
Wilson?
Yes.
Tillman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Patton?
Yes.
Navarrete?
Yes.
Patton?
Yes.
Navarrete?
Yes.
Thank you. Item C on the agenda, resolutions and ordinances. Before you have resolutions C1 through 6, we just took out four through 6. Can someone, if there are not any questions or concerns, can someone make a motion to approve Resolution C1 through 6?
Briefly, Mayor. I know there was some discussion on item number two, a possible walkthrough. Is that something that we can defer, or is that something that needs action tonight?
I'm sorry, Alderman. That was the request. Could you make that motion, Alderman, because we did discuss this and...
Motion to defer to a future meeting?
To table.
Pending a walkthrough, maybe.
Alderman Navarrete, motion to table item number two. Is there a second?
Sec.
Second by Alderman Wilson. All in favor?
Aye.
So the second motion would be to approve items one, three, through six.
Mayor, item number six, are we casting that tonight, or are we waiting until we review on the chat?
The wish is to pass it tonight, and then the family will be invited to the next council meeting.
Then I make the motion to approve the ones from three, four, five, and six.
So moved. Motion made by Alderman Patton, second by Alderman Tillman. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Williams?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Patton?
Yes.
Navarrete?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman, item, I've got to start writing over my, financial matters, one through... Motion made by Alderman Patton, second by Alderman Tillman. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Williams?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Patton?
Yes.
Navarrete?
Yes.
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 Thank you, Alderman. Alderman, item, I've got to start writing over my, financial matters, one through... Is there one through 26?
23.
One through 23?
One through 23. Mayor?
Yes.
Item number three is a buyback for an employee. Part of the time that this employee was with us, she worked out of the water fund, so we need to add a couple of line items in order to properly book her paybacks. So in addition to the 0102251144, as so stated in the motion, we'd also like to include line item 0303651950 and line item 03036-51103, which is comp time.
Everyone heard the motion to amend or the request to amend by the city treasurer? You have the items one through 23 before you. Is there a motion to entertain, to approve items one through 23 with amended numbers?
Tumo.
Motion made by Alderman Williams, seconded by Alderman Gardner. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Patton?
Yes.
Navarrete?
Yes. I apologize, Mayor. For 17, we're going to discuss that, or we'll have an opportunity to discuss that with our finance consultant, John Kasperic, I guess, when that comes up?
Yeah. Tonight is just the finance.
Allowing him to start the process.
Yep. Tonight is the finance.
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Tillman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Right, everyone, we have one quick item in executive session, so can we entertain a motion to go into executive session at 7 o'clock for the purpose of entertainment, employment of a specific individual, and potential litigation? Motion made by Alderman Patton, second by Alderman Gardner.